First, I'd like to say thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight, not just about this development proposal, but about a moment of choice. What about a moment of choice? Together, we have the opportunity to shape the future of O'Leantah. 27 Market Street is more than a proposed building. It's the cornerstone of the city's revitalization. RSS has and continues to propose a mixed-use, professionally managed building with 47 energy-efficient apartments designed for individuals and families earning between 30% and 70% of the area median income, or AMI. It will include parking and a commercial space that will attract more business to downtown, not less. And before I move on, I promise to give a shout out to Tom's Chill Zone Italian Ice, who lured me in this afternoon for free tasting, and they were awesome. Go see them. Perfect. Take a second. All right, in the meantime, while they're moving, this is Dani, and Dani is here. Bonnie, who's gonna join me in a second to tell us a little bit more about her. All right, great, thank you. So this is a chance to move from vision to action, a chance to invest in housing that strengthens our workforce, a chance to spark economic growth, expand access to opportunity, and bring community wellness to life. And sometimes, telling the story of that impact is best understood through the voices of those who lived it, people like Bonnie and Dani, whose partnership with RSS helped her find stability, purpose, and a meaningful way to give back to her community. So she's agreed to join me here as I ask her a few questions. So Bonnie, how long have you lived in O'Leantah?
Eleven years.
Eleven years. And you've had a lot of different roles that you've played with RSS. You've shared that first you started out on your wellness journey, and then you started working with RSS. What roles have you played?
I have worked at the O'Leantah Bagel Company. I have worked on the Warm Line. I do a nightlife on Friday nights, and I also drive for them.
You support a lot of neighbors.
Yes, I do.
All right, now, we didn't practice this, but can you outline what the Wellness Warm Line is? Because I just realized a lot of people don't know what that is. What does that do?
The Wellness Warm Line is a... It's a place where people can call if they have anxiety or are upset, or just need a peer to talk to.
And anyone can call, right? You don't have to, there's no pre-qualifying? Like, you wake up one morning, you're like, "I wanna call", and you call. There's always someone there to listen.
Yeah, there's always somebody there.
So what role would it play for you, or does it play for you, to ensure that you're only paying 30% of your household income towards rent? How does that make a difference in your life?
Well, it helps because doing 30% means I don't have to pay the full amount. It means I'm only paying what my income is, and that helps a lot.
And then, when you balance your budget, what do you do for fun? How do you spend your money on fun things?
I go to the movies, I go shopping, out to dinner.
And if you lived downtown, where would you do those things?
I'd probably go downtown more.
So you're speaking to something really powerful. And laughter aside, I think what I've learned so much from you in the time that we've spent together is that all of these things coupled together make the perfect scenario for growth and wellness and strong community. Would you agree with that, or am I making that up?
No, that is true.
And then, one final thing, before I let you go back into detail.
Okay.
Why would you trust RSS to develop this property over somebody just from the outside who has an epistere?
RSS, I'm actually, this is something I'm gonna put out there. RSS has homes for people where they can live for safety and stuff, and this will also help other people to have a safe place to go. And it's always nice to have a safe place.
And just to be clear, the apartments at 27 Market Street would not be open for people to just drop into. But what that does is by strengthening the workforce and more downtown, that opens up other spaces where people who are passing through are just dropping in, like the Wellness Center, could go ahead and do that when we have staff like you able to stay in downtown. So that's really powerful. Thank you, Bonnie. I know this was, you're super brave coming up here and speaking in front of such a big group, and I really appreciate you, and awesome job. Should you go this way? Perfect. So, thank you, Bonnie. At RSS, we've partnered in the same kind of transformation throughout the state for decades, specifically in O'Leantah for decades. We've also successfully co-developed apartment communities and have been awarded 9% low-income housing tax credit. This is the problem with running our own slides. You forget to take things. Hang in there with me. We've developed other properties throughout the state. I wanna reference that. What further sets us apart from other developers for 27 Market Street is our long-term commitment to O'Leantah and the properties we develop as we ensure every single building remains well-managed and mission-driven. And I wanna point out, there's been a lot of interest in our other properties throughout the state. So I tried to find one that is the closest to what we're proposing here in size and downtown location. So here, you see in this picture, located on Clinton Avenue in Albany, we have a very similar setup, just a different design. But it's important to note that every property we develop is unique to that community, unique to the housing gap that we've established through housing studies. And we pay very close attention to getting it right. So this is Clinton Avenue in Albany, and just wanted to point that out. So I said 9% low-income housing tax credit, and some of you in the room may be wondering, what the heck does that mean? If you're not familiar, Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, or LITC, incentivizes affordable housing by allowing private investment dollars into affordable housing development, which reduces the construction cost to the developer and caps rents at 30% of the household income. So the process goes, once site control is obtained, then pre-development activities pick up, and then we start making more specific plans, more detailed architectural plans. We work with engineers, we work with hiring the professional property management firm. All of those things, we hire our attorneys, we get everything in place, and then we make an application to New York State Homes and Community Renewal. For those of you who have attended some of the housing presentations, Darren Scott is our HCR contact and works with us closely through technical assistance to make sure we get things right, and then we make an application. I'm proud to say that RSS has been awarded 9% tax credit projects, and most recently, an INPAH on our first try. So we call that a unicorn. We're very proud of that. But that's based on our experience and our history. People don't just get awarded these projects unless you have a demonstrated success rate in developing properties. So, the resulting structure where RSS retains its control is a business, not a nonprofit, and it ensures that housing is stable and affordable with rent protections in place for the term of the tax credit contract. Sometimes, that has been 30 years, but typically 40 years. I think my aggressive... Here we are. Please note, the former Ford Building, rendering here, and it's architecture. We're gonna reference that a little bit later. But we've been collaborating for the last 18 months or more, really listening to what people's concerns are. And so the rest of the presentation is really gonna outline the following topics. So, the need for workforce housing and economic growth, concerns about parking, questions around property taxes in the pilot agreement, expectations for professional property management, the opportunity for supportive services that help your neighbors thrive. So let's get started with attracting and retaining the workforce. Thriving communities have safe and affordable housing for all individuals along the socioeconomic spectrum, including individuals starting their careers. This means that without workforce housing, O'Leantah will lose talented people. And Luke is gonna join me to share some thoughts about how this impacts him. This is Luke.
Hello, everyone. It's great to be here. I'd like to thank Christine for allowing me to speak today. My name is Luke Flosh. I'm a senior music industry student over in O'Leantah, and I've had the wonderful pleasure of living in this town for the past four years, and I have really grown a lot. It's become like a second home today. However, as I approach graduation, staying here seems more or less like an impossibility. I've had significant support from my parents to help me through school, for which I will be eternally grateful. But now that I am losing that support and have to stay in O'Leantah two feet, the idea of staying in O'Leantah is far-fetched. Right out of school, I'd probably be far too low to afford a suitable housing arrangement here in town. But with a project like this, creating affordable housing would help a lot in supporting people like me and internally the community to allow anyone like me to be able to afford housing in O'Leantah. But as it stands right now, my income is just not sufficient for what it would take to afford friends around here. So I urge our leaders to please, please, please prioritize affordable housing and get this project up and running. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Luke. And Luke's story is not unique. There are countless professionals, both emerging and experienced, who wanna stay and contribute to O'Leantah's future but feel pushed out by the lack of affordable housing. And Megan is one of them. Thanks, Megan.
Hello, my name is Megan Luwak. I work with the Community Education Project with RSS and enjoy spending time with my friends here at the Mountain View Wellness Center. I graduated summa cum laude from Niagara University with a bachelor's in social work, and I'm one class in a part-time internship away from finishing my master's in public health and community health from New Albany. It's about a year and a half ago that I had to halt my studies due to my physical and mental health deteriorating. I was in a difficult place where I couldn't see my professional future or lost sight of those big dreams. I've been a consumer of the locational rehabilitation services with RSS since past August. I'm very proud to say that I've made great bounds towards feeling like myself again, and I feel RSS has certainly had a role to play in that. I am a face of RSS. I've considered staying in the O'Leantah area to contribute my education, experience, and skills to the organizations who are doing great work to help people with stories like mine and those of my friends. However, reading the local articles and social media, it seems like people in the organizations who are working to solve the root causes of problems in O'Leantah are criticized and unappreciated. The professionals who are most critical to improving the state of O'Leantah often make the sacrifice of earning lower incomes and struggling to pay rent. Building the safe and affordable housing on Market Street would keep professionals, myself included, in the community workforce and the economy. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Megan. Luke, Megan, Bonnie are all examples of why it's so important to understand who this housing is really for. So many others in the local workforce are doing essential jobs, but they're earning those modest incomes. So let's break it down and look a little closer at the income eligibility and who falls into this. Here's the proposed income range based on the 2024 area median income, and I cannot say this enough. The area median income changes year over year and is set by household size. So sometimes, it can seem like you're seeing different numbers. You always have to look at the household size reference, as well as what year is being used. So as another point of reference, by the time this project, even if we had a magic wand, was being leased up in spring of 2027, those AMI numbers are going to be different based on the calculation that is provided to us. We do not create that. That is provided to us by the national folks who do a lot of math. So, as you can see, the proposed income range is for a one-person household between $18,000 and $42,980. For two people, $21,000 to $49,000 and change. Three people, $23,000 and $55,000 and change. The example I've shared in the past for consistency is a single mom with one child working at SUNY O'Leantah and earning $34,152. They would qualify for a two-bedroom apartment with rent capped between $900 and $1,000. Now, when I walked into the Mountain View Wellness Center to meet with my co-presenters, two of them were doing research about local rents. That's part of their job. They come up with a rent list so that folks know where to go. And I heard firsthand their frustration with, "We don't have enough to put on our list, and can you see how small this is and how much someone would have to pay? This isn't going to work." So it is real, and your neighbors are living this. This structure, however, ensures that housing is affordable for new teachers, healthcare workers, restaurant staff, and entry-level professionals, many of which need to live in downtown to support the downtown blossoming economy. So, as we reflect on who this project will serve, it's equally important to consider how it fits into the broader fabric of our community, including infrastructure like parking, which we know is at the top concern for many residents. That's exactly what our longtime O'Leantah resident, E, thought when she first heard about the project. She gave me a really hard time when I walked into Mountain View, and I had to show her this slide. E, help us hear what your thoughts are.
Hi, my name is Amy, and I've been a resident of O'Leantah and the surrounding area for many, many years. My first impression when I heard about this project was, "How are you gonna fit a building and building's occupants' cars on the same level?" But after asking a bunch of questions, I got some answers. So first thing, the adjacent parking lot that will be replacing the parking garage will be available before this breaks ground. So that'll leave the space that's being taken up will have it in the other lot. Once built, the project includes 30 onsite parking spaces. Some tucked inside an interior garage behind the commercial space that they plan on adding, and others outside on the property. The future residents will live and work downtown, meaning they'll be walking, not driving, to most places. So that's all there is.
Thank you, E. And this is, a lot of people have asked about floor plans, how far we've gotten down the architectural process. And this is one floor plan we did ask them to put together to ensure that we could, in fact, fit adequate commercial square footage with the 30 parking spots. And I'll show you an example of this later in the presentation from the outside of some other real, actual buildings that are up and running in other parts of the state. Just as thoughtful planning addressed community concerns around parking, the project's financial structure has been designed to ensure it also contributes meaningfully to the city's tax base. So you may be asking, then, why a pilot? And not just pay the property taxes on the full assessed value? The answer is, in any kind of development, you're always balancing the financial feasibility of the development with stable, ongoing contributions to the city. And another part of that is that while nonprofits are exempt from property taxes because they provide value to the city in other ways, a real estate development project like 27 Market Street and funded by 9% low-income housing tax credit becomes a business, not a nonprofit. Its structure is that of a business. It does not remain a nonprofit. And therefore, we are negotiating a pilot agreement that ensures the city receives predictable, long-term revenue and reduces the overall tax burden to property owners. I wanna point out that it's currently receiving $0, so this will be an increase exponentially. Finally, how are our feet held to the fire? How do we promise that this will happen? The purchase and sale agreement that will be voted on next month states that a pilot must be in place before the sale of the property can go through. So there is the reassurance that it will be done. Just as the financial structure has been designed to protect the city's interests, the day-to-day operations of the building will reflect the same level of professionalism, accountability, and community care that RSS has brought to this community for decades. We will hire a third-party property management company experienced in affordable and supported housing. There will be access to 24/7 staff, ensuring safety, cleanliness, and in-the-moment responsive support. All prospective tenants will be screened and recertified in relation based on income and other eligibility criteria in accordance with all federal and state laws. Leases, house rules, and other legal documents that reinforce expectations will be in place for all tenants. Every tenant has a lease and follows the expected behaviors. Supportive services, and this is a question that comes up, are available directly to 12 households. However, everyone in the building benefits. And while professional property management ensures the building runs smoothly, supportive housing is what ensures that residents have the stability and tools they need to truly thrive, both inside their apartments and in the broader community. So Danine, who's saving her voice in the back wings here, is gonna share a few words on what supportive services she actually provides.
My name is Danine, and I've been working in the O'Leantah community for years, both as a certified nursing assistant and a peer support specialist with RSS. Through creative arts and the women's group I facilitate, I've seen firsthand how healing happens when people have stability support and a chance to feel seen. I work with individuals who are rebuilding their lives, people who face trauma, poverty, or health challenges. What they need, most of what many of us take for granted, is safe, affordable place to live. This project would be life-changing for so many people I support because it means hope, stability, dignity, and not out of reach in O'Leantah. They're possible right here at home.
Thank you. Danine not only provides support services here locally, but her women's group reaches out into other counties beyond Atsico County. So also, I will point out that Danine and E co-facilitated a professional conference breakout session in October at the Sagamore, so that's why they're so good at public speaking. They're rock stars, all of them. Okay, so to be clear, the development we're proposing is not a shelter. It is not a drug or alcohol treatment or rehabilitation center. Do not be confused by the word in our name rehabilitation and what we commonly associate with the word rehabilitation. They are very different things. It is not a halfway house. All tenants sign one-year leases and must meet income and eligibility criteria, as I referenced in past slides, which will be screened and heavily monitored as time goes on. Supportive housing needs permanent apartments with voluntary services like physical and mental healthcare coordination, employment and training support, along with recreation activities that are available to 12 of the resident households choosing to work with RSS. So how does this initiative support the local economy? Sale, our friend Sale, was gonna help me on this slide, but unfortunately, he's feeling under the weather. So instead, we're gonna do a poll. Who either knows about or who has ever visited Good Games in downtown O'Leantah? Wonderful. So if you've been there and spent time, it's entirely possible you've seen Sale. It's his favorite place. So I'm gonna read his comments, and I'm gonna try and turn into third person. "Sale loves spending time in downtown, especially at Good Games. It's one of his favorite places, and honestly, he would love to live close enough to walk there and only, at the same time, pay 30% of his household income towards rent. In order to get there now, he has to find others or a ride. It doesn't always work out. He's not living on public transportation, the route, I should say. That's why he's excited about what's happening at 27 Market Street. Living downtown would give people the chance to really be part of the community, to support local businesses, get around on foot, and enjoy everything O'Leantah has to offer." And then he added another fact. "He loves the fact that the new building is being designed to reflect the historic Ford Building that used to be there because it shows that revitalization doesn't have to mean losing our history. It can mean honoring it, while creating something new and useful for today's residents." We hope that Sale feels better. I promised to show you an example of what commercial space and indoor parking might look like. So I chose a building that I used to live in because I can speak firsthand about how it functions. The building you see here is, there are more than 30 spots. Behind the building, there's a big garage door that opens, and you drive inside, and you park in your identified spot with your permit. And our track record with the developments we've built and the tenants that we typically serve, we usually only use about 25% of the spots that we allot, which gives us the opportunity to use those other 30, let's say, 20 to be generous spots for other purposes, staff, downtown permits, whatever, we'd be willing to work that out. And as E pointed out, the adjacent transportation hub parking spots the adjacent transportation hub parking spots would be online long before we broke ground at 27 Market Street. Then this also has commercial spots. These are all individual. In this example, there's a hibachi place, a florist. But what's important to know is that we've not made a decision about what business would go there because that comes after we're developing with people, finding out what brings more business to other businesses. This is not about being competitive. That's not what RSS has ever brought. We want to be attractive to more people walking and going about in the main street corridor and attracting people down the foothills along the walking path. There's a lot of potential here by this development. And finally, we know that achieving our collective vision takes a team of experts. Architects, funders, lenders, engineers, and service providers. But it all begins with you, the committed local leaders who help bring this vision to life. 27 Market Street is more than just a development. It's a reflection of the future Oneonta has been working towards. It offers thoughtful, balanced approaches to revitalizing our downtown, supporting the workforce, and strengthening the local economy through inclusive, community-focused growth. This moment presents a real choice and a rare opportunity. As council members, you will have the chance to cast a vote that will be remembered not just as yes to a building, but a yes to a vision. A vote that says Oneonta is ready to move forward, that it is a city that values progress, housing equity, and economic stability. You can continue to make Oneonta a place where people want to live, work, and stay. A place where the next generation, the Lukes, the Megans, don't have to leave to afford a home. Let's let this be the moment Oneonta says yes to the thriving downtown we all imagined and begins the next chapter of the story with courage, vision, and community at its heart. We thank you for your time, your service, and your commitment to Oneonta's future. We are ready to move forward together.
So council members will have to move the mics closer and break them here. So do we have questions for Christine as we have here? Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Can I just make a suggestion? Christine nicely broke it into different topics. Maybe it would help our discussion.
He's asking if it would be helpful if I advance the slides backwards and then you could ask questions along.
Well, or if you went back to that slide, we had to talk to a topic to help us to organize it topic by topic. It's coming all over.
Very good idea. So we're going to go back to the segmented overview.
This is the one you mean?
So we'll look at workforce, housing, and economic growth. Let's start with that. And does anyone have a thought or a question for Christine on the subject of workforce, housing, and economic growth? Do you?
Okay. You referenced New York State and federal fair housing laws. And one of the phrases that I heard you use, I appreciated, was responsible intensity. Can you talk about what that looks like? And about what the fair housing laws say about the law?
Sure. So, fair housing laws shape everything from the moment we submit the application as outlined by the Fair Marketing Housing Plan. It's got some more acronyms in there. But what will happen once site control is received is we start interviewing property management firms. And those are the questions we're asking them. We're saying, how do you market in a way that is consistent with fair housing laws? And what will that plan look like? And so that's part of our process is developing that. What I can tell you is really important is really consistent communication about what those rules are, what the expectations are. In a former position, I was responsible for an organization that managed 220 scattered site apartments across a pretty big area. And the best success is when we had a new tenant video and outlined things and the expectations always and sending out updates via text. And so, I can't speak to the exact rules that will exist because that's still to come. We will be able to do that once we get there. But most importantly, is that we are marketing to the group of people that fall into the income range and the other eligibility criteria. And that we are then engaging in a screening process to ensure, according to those fair housing rules, that they fit and that it is going to create a community rather than disconnection and make it uncomfortable for people. Additionally, we will help reinforce that with our onsite staff and our supportive services.
Is there a follow?
I do, but I'll let them. Okay. So you mentioned that onsite support staff. I get the impression that this will be a third-party property management company. Is that, are you intending that to be a property management company that you work with at other locations or something local? Could you expand more on that?
Sure. So we will look at all possibilities. We do have other third-party management companies that we work with in other ways, but it has to be a good fit for here. So we do have a list that we're working from, but we're not canceling any options at this point. That's something that will happen down the road and we'll keep those options open. The most important thing is that they need to be able to work with us cohesively as we integrate the supportive services piece. So property managers, maintenance team, all of that, along with supportive staff will work as a team. And so that team approach is what will drive our decision about whom we work with.
Do we have additional questions from council on workforce, housing, and economic growth? Yes, Mike?
I do have a question. Actually, it's just for Luke and Megan. I know you're just two examples of young people who have lived in Oneonta. But I just wondered if you could give us a concrete numbers. Like, Luke, what are you paying for rent as a student? Versus what do you think, what do you think you might earn after you graduate? What do you want to do?
In the music industry, my income could go a lot of different ways. So I can't really give you an accurate number on that. But what I am paying for rent right now in Oneonta is $3,850 a semester, which, you know, with my rental support is perfectly fine. But on my own, that would be kind of a daunting task.
And Megan, similarly for you, like what? While you're a master student, what were you paying in rent before you came to Oneonta? Why are you paying for rent while you're in RSS?
Sure. I think I could speak more clearly, I suppose, on, it was myself and the people who work building the housing list. In that, we are finding, and I guess from my personal experience of paying rent in other cities, that there's studio or inside the market going for $1,000 in Oneonta without utilities included. Comparable, say, two-bedroom apartment in Edgewell, New York, would be like $1,300, $1,400 here. And it's $1,100 down there. So from personal experience and then doing all this research on housing, like active listings, there's, it's much higher in Oneonta than other places, relatively local.
Anything else, Mike?
Just by those other places, are those all paying?
Entecott, Edgewell, so Vescovo.
Okay, thank you.
On the subject of workforce, housing, economic growth, anything else from council, questions? Yes, Mike?
Christine, could you describe the relationship between RSS in this capacity compared to the Oneonta Housing Authority?
Yes. I think I know what you're asking. But if I don't quite get it right, you can ask a clarifying question, please. So, what I would understand is the Housing Authority would be drawing down subsidy dollars to, on a monthly basis, to offset household rent. That's more like a project-based subsidy. This is very different because the tax credits are granted to the private investors and that money pays for the construction so that the developer, in this case RSS, doesn't have to come up with as much to cover costs. So then our operating expenses on monthly basis, on an annual basis, are much less, which allows us to charge less. There isn't like a subsidy that's getting drawn down from HUD or another place for the 9% part of this. In terms of relationship, the structure is something that you need a map to really explain. And I'm going to try and do justice with my hands. But essentially, RSS retains control as managing partner, general partner, over the entity. So we always have control, but it is its own business entity. Did that answer your question?
Close.
Okay.
So you just a few minutes ago said that you're going to be marketing. And understanding that the Oneonta Housing Authority currently has and has had for quite some time vacancies, your marketing aspect, are you trying to, are you saying to this council that the clients that you're going after is a different market?
Now I understand, thank you. So as outlined in what we will propose in our marketing plan, written by our professional management company that we hire, we will have to put forth a plan for how we're not going to make that competition, that we're not going to be poaching from their waitlist or from, but I, without seeing who exactly, what their income brackets are and all of that, I can't speak to how there could or could not be overlap. But our goal is to add to the housing stock, not compete with others doing the work already.
I have a follow-up. So if you're potentially not going after the same clientele as Oneonta Housing Authority goes after because of those vacancies, I know that they're marketing two and a half hours in a diameter to try to fill those spaces. I'm just curious on your marketing aspect of how many individuals you feel are in Atsito County that need housing?
So we've had a professional market analysis done, and that has given us very clear numbers of the housing stock that is available to workforce and folks between that 30 and 70%. And it establishes a pretty drastic need right in the area. Again, not having those numbers at the top of my fingers, but we wouldn't have endeavored further than week one of getting that housing study if we were not shown that there was need here beyond what already exists. Our goal is to serve people with this, in this area, with this housing.
Is that data you can share with this council?
I can certainly pull that up and see, there are parts of it that are proprietary, but I can certainly work with Dave and we can provide the parts of that, yes.
Thank you. Let me go to Mike.
Yeah. And I don't know if we have anybody here that can speak to this today, but I just want to check on if there are actually vacancies with the Oneonta Housing Authority. My understanding was that they had a waitlist of about two years. And I know I followed up with private rental companies recently, including Springer Board Lock as well as D Street Lofts. They are also full and have waiting lists. So I think we just should, you know, whether or not, you know, there are vacancies.
And I might be able to provide some clarification. There may be units that are vacant, but it may be for other reasons than not having enough interest or need. It could be, and I've had this happen in past roles, where the amount of improvement or things that needed to be fixed in the apartment exceeded what... You can't fix anything in the HUD housing and project-based subsidy without approval and permission. If it exceeds a certain amount, it can take a long time to get permission to fix things.
Yeah. So to a linked point, I sit next to the director of the housing, on the Housing Commission, and that information came directly from. And it was at, the Housing Commission was actually quite shocked that there was vacancies. But they're literally recruiting all the way down to two and a half hours to try to fill up a waiting space. So we'll need, obviously, having council going to be getting some information from you on this. And I think we'll get some information as well from the Housing Authority. Actually, there is not the same number here. Thank you for that. So have we exhausted this segment?
I don't know if this actually fits into this, but it's about, okay. May I? Okay. I don't know if this fits into it, but it's hard, I think, to bucket them a little bit as things came up. So I'm going to ask it now, so that's okay. With regard to leasing up commercial spaces, and it's sort of familiar. You had mentioned that, you know, you have some ideas for what might go in there that will be determined until much later. I wonder if you could speak to how, like what that decision process looks like? And how you can, I don't want to use this word discriminate, but how you can have a choice really who is leasing those spaces?
So, most importantly, the trigger for us to start that process is site control. We don't have a project right now until we have site control. This is all pre-development, all of the investment of time and research and all of that. It's really just RSS saying, this is what we have, a proposal. Once we have some signal that we're moving forward, then we will look at what other businesses exist, where are their desks? I've been hearing a lot recently around bowling alley. You know, I don't know anything about how much space bowling alley needs, but we would find out and we would engage.
I've never owned a building before because this may be kind of like a very, you know, silly question. But my understanding is that, similar to, you know, a tenant, that if they meet their criteria and they can't pay the rent, I guess I don't know what, what like legal authority there is to discriminate on a commercial tenant. So I don't know what oversight really RSS would have. I mean, you can have ideas and read, but I don't know necessarily what oversight you would have over the commercial spaces. So that's what I'm asking.
Yeah. So, fair housing doesn't apply. It would be a different structure. And I would love it if we had 600 different businesses knocking down our doors and we were making the best decision. You can make a decision based on people's business plan. Is it viable? Are they, do they have the money to be able to pay rent? All those things, the same way you screen residential tenants, you can also screen business tenants. So that's as much as I have for you in this moment. But I can assure you that if a project moves forward, we would go down that road much deeper.
Of course. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Mike?
Well, with regard to commercial space, I just want to ask, you said 7,000 square feet of commercial space. Do you have any vision of, like how many?
How would it get broken up?
Would that be one large business or local?
We have not entered into that conversation yet. That would come as a thing. That would come as a thing happens.
So regarding the 7,200 square feet, I'm assuming you've done some marketing. What is the square footage price that you're looking to go after?
So we have not, other than a very preliminary budget, just to make sure that it could work. I don't have that information off the top of my head. I would consult our, our development consultant, Monica McCullough, and we could look that up. It is, it's been done, but that was not my role.
So obviously you'd be in competition with already vacant spaces that are in downtown O'neana. So that would be concerning. I know that the dollar per square foot has not gone up. I think it's over 10 years because of the struggling aspect of downtown O'neana. What was the driving force to getting to 7,200?
The driving force is zoning regulations and the structure of the building. We are open, as I said, we have done baby steps with the architects, so things are, this is not printed in permanent ink.
So, did I turn?
I turned the page here, I'm sorry.
Let's do it here. I'll do it. I know it's a, it's a practice in larger cities for the state to incentivize private developers to include housing units that are affordable. And so I was just curious if your project is allowing for any income for units that fall outside of the range that you've provided? So in other words, like if you're above the number in terms of your annual income as a household, is there still a possibility of availability?
The only possibility at this point is the 30 to 70% is very clearly defined in the housing study we have done. Our consultant does say that we may, as time approaches and we see those area median incomes and construction costs, we may be able to get up to 80%, but I didn't want to make promises until we have more relevant data.
With that, let's move on to the parking discussion. Does anyone on council have a question or thought about parking they'd like to share?
I'm going to go with one, stand one up. The 30 parking spots, you mentioned that they're indoors. And you also, I believe, mentioned that there may or may not be an opportunity for the public to park there. Would that be paid parking?
So we would have to figure that out, whatever structure works best. It may be that there is a specific business that needs more support in that way and we could create a partnership with them. We have not defined that. I just know that we will have, 30 parking spots will not be used by all the tenants in that building.
Okay, so again, my question is not exactly about parking, but kind of sideways. So the structure of the building that you had them draw up, this is hilarious.
I know, I know.
Talking of, so.
Yes.
So one of the goals of development in downtown and the development of downtown is called safety through environmental design. When I saw that drawing that was up there, I saw kind of a few, like, it basically looked like a dark corner in a parking lot. So can you kind of elaborate on what measures will be taken for creating a safe parcel in the middle of our downtown? And what is available for two other pits? So that, you know, it doesn't become like a dark, chatty cornered lot?
Sure. Some conversations that we had with the architect, which I think were beyond what the rendering could show, was creating lighting, both natural and intentional, and the right kind of landscaping, but attracting people both from and to foothills and any other additional development that happens down further on Market Street, into the park, et cetera. We want it to feel like it has a flow. And so what do you want when you're walking past a building? Maybe some extra overhangs, so if it's raining or snowing, you don't feel like you're getting wet. I always do that, like I pop in and out of the overhangs when I'm walking through cities. But great care and concern can be taken to make sure that it is a cornerstone and something that people feel like they want to be near and around, rather than a dark hole or something that is unsafe in some way. So that will come through the design and architectural process.
So just as a follow-up question, it looks like the design of the building is logically kind of an L in terms of the commercial space. And then the parking, which will be underneath the building. When you say inside, this is going to be a fully enclosed parking structure?
Yep.
That will be limited access?
Okay.
Because if it's, so imagine a door, a garage door like that. You come around the back of the building and you pull in and you happen to have a permit to get in and it senses you and it goes up. And you pull into your parking spot, which is identified. Okay, so it'll be fully enclosed? So those spaces will not be available then for the tenants of the first or commercial spaces?
It very well could be. We, that's something that will develop.
Okay.
It could go along with their lease. So let's say you're leasing up a commercial space and whatever that is, whatever business that is, you can absolutely create permits that go along with that.
But like, so practically, how would, but like customers, for example, let's say it was before us. How would customers utilize the parking just underneath the building or would they not be able to?
No, it's entirely possible. We would have to work those things out, but those things, you have a lot of strategies to work out through the architectural design and/or after the fact when you're planning a business with a potential tenant. And there's all kinds of things you can work in.
Of course, these are the things that the council, having brought these and more to you, pointed in the equation.
Correct. They get victim.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on Katie's question about design. It was maybe a little bit more targeted for parking, but I actually wanted to start with the first slide, which was the image of the, of the property as it's currently conceived. And I was just curious to what extent, I think I remember in our first round of discussions last year, there was a mock-up and some notion of, some idea of what the property would look like. I'm just curious if we're kind of closer to an actual design? I mean, is this really what, or, or, and this is really my question more broadly, and how open is this process to our input as council, to our input as public? You know, to what extent can we have this be a real collaboration in terms of design?
So this is the very same rendering that we've been using all along. It has not changed at all. And when we have a project, when we are in the design phase, which means we have an agreement for site control, that is when we would begin to re-engage the architects on a deeper level. And I would be more than happy to engage a person or some, some process for people to vote and give their opinions. Obviously, we have to work with architects who are much smarter than me. So sometimes I'm like, that's an amazing idea. And then I take it and they don't understand what I'm saying. So it is a process. We're open to hearing what people think and want. We've been open and we've continued to develop this and bake in those pieces. It's just very premature to have gone down that road without knowing if there is even a project.
Okay, so I have a follow-up question based on that, which is, what are, I know that obviously you're at the beginning stages of design. To be clear, once you have site control, you do not have to allow council or the public be involved in the design process?
Well, we do, we will have to go before planning. And planning will ensure that we are following all of the code. And you certainly can talk to planning commission members if suddenly we were just like, we don't care about any of these. And then you could have your input there. So that is the body that then gets into the design and the mechanicals and all of the important pieces there.
Right, so it would, it would meet that requirement, of course, when you talk about it. So, but my question actually was about the environmental goals of the property. Obviously, you haven't done a healthy, you know, a lot in terms of designing, you know, a building at all, let alone a certified building. But can you talk about some of the ideas that you may have for ensuring the environmental quality of this building?
My idea is that I am going to call the professionals at NYSARDA and have engineers that are experts in this and I will work hand in hand with them to make sure that we are doing everything possible. Now, we did do an initial review of the environmental disc plot, obviously. It was a four-bedroom before, so one might assume that there's some like oil in the ground. And so we have understood that that is something we're going to need to literally dig deeper into. So those are all things that would come in the next phase.
Christine, can you bring back up those?
Oh, yes, sorry. There you go.
All right, so the third, unless there's something else on parking? There is?
I do have one question.
Yes, Christine.
You estimated 30 parking spaces for 47 residents. I know the, the national average is that like 33% of households actually have one car. So, and I think the average household has 1.8 cars or something. So what, where do you get that?
Where's the head? The national average represents every income level. So if you just take the 30 to 70% of the area median income households, which we have a lot of experienced housing, that is a much lower average of people driving. They're looking to build their wealth by not having the expensive vehicles. They're using public transportation, living in downtown center so they can walk, ride sharing, et cetera.
If I can just ask maybe Greg, if you can find a microphone. You gave a presentation about parking at our last council meeting and you had done a survey of several, several buildings that were somewhat similar profile and found some numbers that were interesting.
Thanks, Mayor. Off the top of my head, I'd ask them a couple of numbers, but just surveying some local downtown landlords. And you can, you can see what Christine's talking about, there's, there's differences depending on segment of housing. So a few student, generally around the student housing apartments that I got information from, there's somewhere around 60 to 70% of bedrooms in that building would be associated with a car, whereas somewhere like the East Street Lofts had about 33, it was about 33% of the bedrooms in the building had a car associated with it. I think it was 30% for the four block as well. So there's a range, 30 to 70%. We do not see more than one car per bedroom in the data from what I look at. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. All right. I believe we're good with parking now. Mike, your last question's a little bit.
Yeah.
So we'll move on to property taxes and housing agreements. And then we'll go ahead and make the questions again up to council. Does anybody have something, Christine, on carbon taxes and housing? I'm going to go with Lynn first.
Christine, you mentioned earlier that you were already negotiating, I believe, the door that you used to. Who are you negotiating pilot with?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that question. I heard negotiating twice, but I think maybe your mic is not.
I believe you were, you stated earlier tonight that when you mentioned pilot that you were negotiating. Who would you be negotiating with?
We would be negotiating a pilot, yes. We have done nothing on a pilot, other than when you and I spoke early on, we did a little research about something you suggested about a process by which another housing development achieved what you felt was a fair and equitable pilot. And so we're happy to follow that same process. I would have to refresh my memory what it was, but we were fans when we heard that.
Right, that's referencing the law on Eats and it was two actuators that were paid for by the government.
Yes. Yes. Yep. Thank you for the refresher.
We have additional questions from council on pilots, taxes? Mike?
Yeah, hi. So I guess my question is really just clarification about the type of business model. Because I think a lot of folks in the community have been under the impression that it would be a nonprofit. But you know, from your explanation, it's going to be a business. And also, well, let's just start with that, that's one question. I'm looking for a slide and I may have changed the, okay. This isn't the one I like the best, but I'll just go back. So when private investors have a lot of money, they are always looking for tax credits, things that will help them pay less taxes. They then invest those dollars into a syndicator, someone to take a whole bunch of small dollars or medium dollars or large dollars, put them all together. And then those get awarded to each state. Each state, in our case, New York State, follows a QAP, a qualified, it's a whole list of things that you have to achieve in order to be considered for a 9% tax credit project. RSS, the developer, is a nonprofit, so we are eligible because of our background, our experience in, in communities, to apply for a tax credit project, which in essence means that we would then get these private investor dollars. Private investor dollars under tax code, and I'm certainly no accountant, but it would not work to just pass through to a nonprofit. So a business entity has to be created for the actual development itself. And the property management firm, there's a number of different pieces to this structure, but most importantly, it is no longer a nonprofit. The developer is a nonprofit, the entity is not. Yeah, no, that, that helps clarify because I think there were, you know, there'd been a lot of questions about was it private or was it public dollar investment? So that helps a lot. And I think really the other thing that I hear a lot of concern about is pilot, you know. And, you know, my impression is that, you know, pilot, you know, is something that can really benefit the city and the taxpayers. So I was hoping you could speak to that. Sure, actually, there are people in this room who can speak to that even better than I can. And I know there have been recorded presentations about the benefits of pilots. But essentially, the way it benefits both the city and the development is it is a controlled set amount. Now, it can escalate each year, so it's not static, the same every year, but it is controlled. You can plan for it. The city can plan every year when they're doing their budget. And the 27-market street entity can plan as they're looking at their operating budget. So when you're working to ensure that housing is affordable to your workforce, you want to know what to expect. You don't want these crazy new expenses coming up depending on what's happening. And the city wants to know what it can expect. Now, secondarily to that, my understanding from Virginia, I'm going to do justice as best as I can. You have a pie and when you cut a piece of that pie out that gets paid through a pilot, it reduces the amount that is put out to the homeowners to pay if it's a smaller pie. Did I get that right in simple terms? Okay, thank you.
Additional, Mike?
A project question. I, I know that the typical term for pilot is maybe 15 years often. Are those numbers you're working with? And have you thought about, would you be, whether the project's economically viable with a shorter term pilot? And my reason for asking is just thinking about the impact on the city. And yes, we want to make this project viable, but we also have a limited budget to work with.
Absolutely. So the way it works in the tax credit project is you negotiate your pilot for the term of the tax credits. And that's why we would use these actuators, because they've done this, they do this all the time. Now, as I mentioned, this could be an escalating pilot, so not all are. Sometimes it's based on rents, et cetera. But, but the idea is that if it's escalating a percentage year over year, that then the city can plan on an increase year over year. But that is the extent of my thoughts. I would be leaning into the professionals could, hope could help us through this.
Answer your question?
That does answer my question for the moment, but I think as a council, we'll have to think about, about those terms when we get to it. I also, sort of connected question. I saw, I found the, I got sent the HUD entitlement grant application that RSS submitted for a similar project in Ithaca. And that kind of information would be very helpful for our decision making. Have you, is it too preliminary for you guys to have put together any of those numbers? And when would you be putting those numbers together?
So the process would look like site control, negotiating the pilot, depending on how long that took. There was an annual application to HCR for that nine percent round, and that will come up over the summer. So if we hustled and got through that process, then we would engage in the process of like the design and the operating budget, et cetera. Dave, my guru on tax credits at RSS, and he just gave me a look like, no, I'm not. We would work with our development consultant, and we could get you some of those numbers. I'm not prepared to do that.
So just to understand, if we do approve this project in May, that will give you time to submit paperwork this summer, but if we don't, what's?
There's a lot of other factors. So it would, the next step after site control, let's say it was voted yes, written right in the purchase and sale agreement, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, I'm sure that you can get your hands on it, it does articulate that a pilot needs to be negotiated and settled on before the sale can go through. So that would be kind of our next step. And depending on how long that took, the round is only once a year still?
Yeah.
Yes, August-ish?
Hi, Dave Warren from RSS. And to be clear, oh, thank you. Hi, Dave Warren from RSS. And to be clear, our window is quickly closing to make a round this coming year. We would be looking at a 2026 round very, very quickly, I would say.
And that's not necessarily a bad thing. It isn't a great thing, because a lot of things can change, but there are implications both ways, so.
So I heard you say in your presentation that, and just reiterate here, that the pilot would be negotiated for the term of the tax credits, which you said could be thirty to forty years.
Thirty, forty, or thirty? Am I hearing that? The term of the tax credits? Yeah, it will vary.
But it's alongside that.
Yes.
And then what happens?
So then, a number of things can happen. With RSS as an managing entity, we would have full control over what would happen, whether you can then negotiate a four percent reinvestment in the property so that you can do a full rehab, you could make it, I mean, who knows what's going to happen in forty years? But RSS would still be in control in terms of if no new pilot was negotiated, the city would have every right to put it on the tax rolls and start collecting full taxes. That's just by default. That's what would happen. We would be having conversations, well, not me, I'll be, well, someone at RSS.
Hopefully, you'll be like happily playing game with that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Me too.
Anyone else on this subject? Then we'll move to professional property management and...
Surprise, surprise. So you've mentioned that you use property managers for other projects that are similar. But RSS is already in Oneonta. There's a house around the porch. Are there property managers for any of the other different types of housing?
Great question. So very different kind of housing. They're much smaller scale, so we don't have separate property management companies. We would be hiring local snowplow mechanics, plumbers, electricians, all of that. That's how we manage those smaller entities. This is something much bigger. It goes beyond the supportive housing that we provide, and that's why we would engage a professional property management firm. You're welcome.
Anyone else on this subject?
Sure. If anyone else has a question, I feel like I'm dominating. But I heard from a number of constituents on my ward who are, have a looking example of the D Street Lots where this city, people feel like the city was promised one thing and got another thing delivered, as far as property management in particular, and that sort of ongoing development. As well as construction issues because of cost cutting that led to ongoing building problems in that development. I mean, I know word to word, but how can you reassure us?
Sure.
That there will be effective property management?
That's a great question. So one of the differences, there's many differences, but one of the differences is there are all different pieces that RSS will bring together. So D Street is managed by the developer, who also has a property management arm as part of their company, as well as a construction firm as part of their company. So also, they were leasing up during the pandemic. I'm unsure of if they had a compliance auditor of all of their screening files, all of that. I don't know enough about the way it went for them, but I can tell you that part of our process for choosing a contractor, property management firm, architect, everything, is to say, can you show us how things worked during the pandemic for you? Little story, Dave and I both were in the middle of a lease-up and development during the pandemic as well. And it went off, and we leased up, and there's been no issues. And I think we can owe that to the fact that we had a lot of different partners at the table and paid very close attention, and a development consultant that could say to us six months before there was an issue, or six days, like, this is a problem, you need to do this. And so we have a demonstrated track record. RSS is not going to let this community down. It hasn't yet. We're not going to. That's not what we're here for.
My follow-up question, how, how do you deal with proper problems in your property services that they got developed? Like either in terms of residents who are causing problems, what kind of eviction policies do you have? Or start with that.
Yep. So what's really important, because I can't go into the specific details of the policies here, but what I can tell you is the trend, which is you notice things when they're changing early on. You nip it right in the bud. If somebody's struggling, you notice right away. You connect with them. If someone comes to you and says, I haven't seen the person in three B, you say like, hey, team, how can we work with this person? So ninety percent of the time, you don't get to the point of eviction because you're noticing things long before, and you're able to plug in supports before it's an issue. In the case during the pandemic, we know there's a million reasons some people just didn't pay their rent, and that is still haunting property managers. So that's a very different situation. But with regular communication, reminders, policies that say if you haven't paid on day one, you get a notice. If you haven't paid by day, I don't remember what it is now. The rule changed. It used to be day five, now it might be fifteen, whatever. You start the process. Now, you can get to court with someone, and they can say, I have the money, and you can choose to take it. And that's awesome, because now you have a payment up to date, and a tenant who understands that you're going to act quickly. So it's excellent communication, really clear expectations, and acting fast.
Okay, so follow-up question. So you know that there will be a third party property management company. You mentioned twenty-four hour onsite supervision. Are you referring to the property management company in, would you say that? Because the other thing that I heard was that the twelve supportive units are for folks who are voluntarily seeking RSS services. And so I'm wondering, yeah, if it's a property manager or if it's someone from RSS who will be onsite.
So I just want to visit the word supervision, because it sounds a little jail-like.
Oh, okay.
And that's not, and that's not what we do at all. We never have to. It's amazing. And I have somebody staff in the room, colleagues, who can demonstrate examples. And every person who spoke this evening alongside me are examples, less of services that RSS provided, but more of leadership and peer support, who are there when there's a little wall or people need support. And that is the model that we use. So specific to twenty-four seven, I'm not dancing around that, but I just wanted to get rid of that supervision word. We will, during lease-up, absolutely have a combination of property management and supportive staff available twenty-four seven. We will then, as every business does, assess and say, like, what are the busy times? When do we need people? Once it's fully leased and the community is humming along, we're going to take a look at that and say, what works best, and how can we adapt and pivot so that we're learning this as effectively as possible? It's about building a community and not so much about just putting people in apartments.
So we've kind of segued into the last of these lines, which is supportive services and housing support. Does council have additional questions? All good? Well, thank you, Christine. Thank you, everyone.
Mayor? One person, sorry, one person that didn't fit in any of these categories. I've also had a number of people on my ward ask the question of why, why is this the right property? And I know the city owns it, which is a factor in favor, but the city also owns other parcels around the city. Some people have asked, why does it have to be downtown? Is it pretty beyond another RSS-owned property? I remember you proposed a project on Nervous Street, which the neighborhood bought against. So could you tell us why?
Absolutely. Why Market Street? Because it checks almost all the boxes in the city's comprehensive plan. And it develops the walking and living density that is going to attract new business, attract other developers. And the developer world is very small. I know lots of them who are kind of watching on the fringe and saying like, oh, O'nean is pretty cool, they have a lot of cool things, but I need to know that I'm able to get this done, because unlike RSS, they're kind of in and out until they know. They might not stick around for this long. And also, we have a trusted relationship with so many people in the community. So it's a, it's a safe bet to take for everyone. Workforce, development, walkability, fewer cars, less parking issues, all of it. It's a start, it's a step forward towards achieving those goals. And yes, we do own a lot of other properties, and certainly we have those as options, but we are being community responsive. We are listening, and that is why.
Thank you. Anything for the mic?
Your honor, excuse me. Do you have a hand for the answers?
The audience, yeah.
Wants to know if there are any questions and answers.
We'll be coming to that in just a heartbeat. Anything else from council? Christine, again, thank you so much. Thank you again to all the folks who spoke. And we are now at this juncture. I'd like to recognize the Institute for Public Service, whose students greeted you at the door, and who will now facilitate the petitioners section of the council meeting. Can you guys raise your hand so that we all know where you are and who you are? Give them a hand. Now, we have a long meeting still ahead of us, and it's a full agenda. So I would ask that, keeping that in mind, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. Please keep your comments brief and to the point, and obviously respectful. And our student facilitators will pass you a mic. And once you've begun speaking, they'll alert you as you approach two minutes, so that you can begin wrapping up in that next minute, okay? We'd like all those who wish to speak to have the chance, but in deference to the rest of this evening's agenda, which I said is quite full, we'd like to keep our time in this section to half an hour or so. I don't want to be here to midnight. As always, before you begin sharing your thoughts, please identify yourself and where you live, and try to avoid repeating statements that have already been made. The fact that you share those sentiments is important, it really is, but you'll receive a handout. You'll have received a handout, and on that you'll see the contact information for your council. And there is no better way to share your opinion than to commit to correspondence to a council meeting, right? That's democracy in action. If you want to be refraining, remember, send the emails. So finally, to be clear, we will have the same opportunities for public input on April fifteenth and on May sixth. Again, I thank you. Reminder, this isn't a Q and A. It's your opportunity to offer comments. So if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand now.
Hi, I'm Margio Mera. Hang on a second, okay. I'm Margio Mera. I live at Foreview Park North in Oneonta. And I want to talk about, I don't want you to rush the future of Twenty-Seven Market Street. And this is to the mayor and the council members. As elected officials, you hold the important responsibility of acting as thoughtful stewards of the public property. The decisions you make should demonstrate lasting commitment, um, commitment rather, to the long-term interests of the people of Oneonta. I want to begin by expressing my belief that Twenty-Seven Market Street is not the appropriate location for the proposed RSS project. Additionally, if and when this property is sold, I firmly believe it should remain on the tax rolls. The proposed sale of Market Street is a significant decision, one that will have long-lasting term consequences for our community. It deserves careful, deliberate, and fully informed consideration. As you know, the ongoing transit hub and accompanying parking development, expected to be completed in September 2025, will bring significant changes to Market Street and the surrounding area. These changes are likely to affect the value and strategic importance of Twenty-Seven Market Street. A key component of this project is the new one hundred and fifteen car parking lot being constructed behind the transit hub. However, at this time, we do not fully understand how effective the lot will be in meeting the needs of downtown residents, businesses, and visitors. There are valid concerns about the parking lot's accessibility and size, both of which could limit Oneonta's future growth. How well this facility serves the community will directly influence the use and value of neighboring properties, including Twenty-Seven Market Street. Given these uncertainties, moving forward with any sale at this time, particularly to RSS, is premature. Taking such a step before we fully understand the implications of the transit hub and related infrastructure would be short-sighted and potentially harmful to the city's long-term goals. Deferring all decision making on this sale of this property until next year would allow the council time to evaluate the full impact of the transit hub and parking development. A year from now, with more information and clearer insight, the council will be much stronger positioned to determine the most beneficial and informed path forward for our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bob Holstead. I'm over here. Bob Holstead, Three Center Street, Oneonta, New York. I'm a forty-five-year resident of the city, and I just want to check for understanding, because that's what old guys do. The council is going to vote on this project on May sixth, is my understanding, and I'm wondering if they're going to have the numbers. And I'm wondering if they're going to have the numbers about the pilot, which would reflect some income. Uh, I just don't know whether they're going to have the numbers before that vote. That's my question.
Bob, I hate to say, but we're not doing a Q and A here, but we'll, we'll get that information and make sure you have it.
Thank you. Dorothy Fait, 97th Street, O'neana. We talk a lot in O'neana about being a warm, welcoming community, but sometimes, especially when we're worried about how things are changing, we forget to act like it. We started looking at each other as threats to be isolated and neutralized instead of as neighbors. And we created constructive dialogue for anger, contempt, and shame. Collectively, we, the citizens of O'neana, are turning this into a decidedly unfriendly place to live. It's up to us then, as residents and neighbors, to change that and to be the kind of community we say we are. We will always have neighbors who fall on hard times, whether or not RSS develops 27 Market Street. So we have to decide, do we promise to consistently help people back up when they fall so that they can rejoin the community? Or do we just step over them repeatedly and complain about the inconvenience? So this is my question, not for the city or for RSS, but for each of us. What kind of neighbor do you want to be? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Si Maurice. I'm a tenant who lives on Market Street. I came here today to urge the common council to have the courage to move forward and say yes to this project. Let's be clear, one of the most pressing issues facing most Americans today is the unavailability of housing. This is directly due to short-term and narrow financial interests dominating a lot of cities. All around the country, government officials are surrendering to wealthy interests who use fear-mongering about undesirables to mask their desire to taking profit at the expense of working people who don't have their level of economic leverage. For the first time in American history, we are seeing over, the cost of housing is seven times the median income for most Americans. And it doesn't take a profit to see that this is unsustainable. Without access to affordable housing, it is impossible to attract or retain young workers. In a college town like this, that's a fundamental problem. Speaking from my home experience, you know, as, even as an engineer who makes more than the median income, it was very hard to find housing here, particularly housing that was actually affordable. And I think that's something that needs to be kept in mind when we think about the future of O'neana. And this is even more true for lower-income workers. You know, available housing does more than just attract a talent, but in accordance with the plan that RSS is working towards, integrates people into their communities, allowing them to become contributors as workers and by giving them a vital base of support. It's worth to understand, decisions like this are not just about marginal disagreements in policy. They are rooted in questions of who this council is meant to serve. Is it meant to serve a few wealthy interests who want to take every piece of land in the city and, you know, use it to make as much profit as possible? Or is it meant to serve the majority of working-class people who live in this town? And to retreat on this issue would be to state the former in no uncertain terms. Indeed, saying that development of O'neana as a place for people to live is less important than the interest of a few rent seekers. But to do the latter, to go forward with the project, would be a bold stand in favor of O'neana's working-class majority and its future as a place for the well-being of all is the standard we use to decide on policy. It's far from enough to fully resolve the problem we are faced with, but it would be a crucial first step. I hope you, as the representatives of the people of O'neana, can have the courage to do the right thing on this issue. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I hope many of you know me. I'm O'neana's resident nuisance, Danny Lappin, 3 College Terrace. All right. Good evening, Mayor Grenick and esteemed members of the O'neana Common Council. I'd like to qualify my, my comments as a man who wears many hats by stating that the views I represent tonight are my own. I do not in any way, form, or manner represent the views of the New York State Department of State, my employer, or the state of New York more broadly. I stand before you tonight to speak in favor of RSS's proposal to develop 27 Market Street into a mixed-use project. The challenges facing our community around housing, affordability, homelessness, and the viability of our business community are truly apparent. Indeed, I see this every day when I take my dog Coco downtown. We have a community who have been aware of this for many years in response to previous comments. We have planned for this for the last decade or more through our comprehensive plan that we passed in 2018 and the new Downtown ME1 zoning code that we passed in 2022. These documents were endorsed by multiple administrations in a bipartisan fashion, okay? There was intensive and equitable public engagement processes attached to each of these process, each of these efforts. The public stated that these are our preferred goals and objectives for development in the city. RSS is responding to that consensus that the council and the previous administration and the public put forward. They respond to the call for this type of project as they believe, as we believe as a community, that it would fit well here, okay? And we also, as a city, have stated publicly that we believe that affordable housing is integral to our continued economic success. But of course, any new project should be subject to intense scrutiny by the community. RSS as a developer has not only shown that it is willing to meet these expectations, but that they are willing to exceed them. They were the recipient, as Christine stated earlier, of a $7.1 million award from New York State Homes and Community renewal to develop a 70-unit affordable housing complex in the city of Ithaca. And we all know that this community has an exacting zoning code. They have a robust planning process, and they were welcomed with open arms. It's a testament to their quality as a developer. And just to get an idea of how competitive this project, this application process is, there are only 28 projects in the entire state that were awarded in the latest round. Each year has a, each year has an incredibly detailed and complex set of requirements as defined by the 1986 Tax Reform Act that ensure that only the most robust and capable developers are chosen for a low-income housing tax credit award. This shows that they are not only willing to work with the city, but have done so in the past elsewhere and in the state of New York, if awarded, would place a full faith and effort in them. I want, I guess I will conclude my statement by echoing a sentiment shared by many of my fellow community members. We all want to work together to ensure that our community succeed. And indeed, from the questions demonstrated by the council tonight, it's clear that there's a lot of mechanics that are in need of being worked out. Let's let the planning commission do their job and vote yes on the sale of 27 Market Street.
Hi, I'm Brian Shaughnessy. I live at 6 North Delmonte Circle in the 1st Ward. I also own property downtown. I've, I've spent a lot of time speaking with downtown business owners downtown over the last couple of years especially. And the demolition of the parking garages has really hurt downtown. And I think 20, between 20 and 40% of businesses down, on an average, across downtown businesses. And we're really moving too quickly with giving more, giving way more of our downtown parking. I wrote a letter here. I'm just going to read it. "I want to remind the council that the city purchased 27 Market Street five years ago with the goal of building a transit hub and renovating the adjacent parking garage. However, in 2023, when those plans changed and the parking garage was demolished, 27 Market Street became something else. It became a critical downtown parking lot. It now serves as a partial replacement for the parking garage we lost and it supports downtown businesses, employees, residents, and visitors. The reckless push to sell the slot to RSS undermines the city's obligation to safeguard essential public assets. The current use for 27 Market Street meets a significant public need that emerged from the following, from following the demolition of the former parking garage. It has become vital to the functioning of downtown O'neana, serving hundreds of users, filling a major infrastructure gap, and enhancing accessibility and economic activity. In many ways, it now functions as a type of transit-oriented public space that closely reflects the original vision. Because of its essential role, the city has both a legal and ethical obligation to treat 27 Market Street as an important public asset. Any attempt to convert it to private use, especially for tax-exempt or limited-access housing, must be backed by clear data-driven evidence that the new purpose provides equal or greater benefit to the community. The city has already stated that it is not seeking the highest possible price for the sale of this property, which only increases the burden on the city to provide a compelling, transparent justification for the sale. That justification should include a full evaluation of how the sale would affect downtown vitality and long-term comparison of public versus private ownership. Thoughtful and accountable decision-making is necessary to safeguard the public assets that serve our community." Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stacy McAlorma. I'm a resident of the 1st Ward at 9 Hickory Street. It's my understanding we've been, as a city, community, talking about the development of this property for almost five years. And I think it would be lovely to see movement forward. I'm actually making a decision right now for the city of O'neana. And at a time when safety nets across this country are being dismantled, that it seems that RSS is a resource in preserving the need for looking out at the community of where safety nets have often traditionally provided resources for people who live on the edge. And we have so many people here in our city that need the support of places like RSS is offering. And I think it would be great to see momentum brought forward in providing people who work minimum wage and what was presented in the 30 to 70% margins of where people make the average income. And I would love to see our community looking at loving our neighbors and seeing where love can be manifested as community members in a place where a company is offering to provide the resources that our community so much needs and the people of our city so much needs in being a more cohesive community. And I support the RSS project. Thank you.
Hi, Your Honor.
How you doing?
My name, my name is EJ. I'm a student here as well, the 1st Ward resident. And I was going to say, I was going to not have 27 Market Street be developed here on the city. But I'm afraid that, you know, they would allow people who were not meet the guidelines nor somehow or another do not have a background check. However, you know, we've seen enough of this, I think, in the news, where now we have borderline detection. We can't let people leaving in our country anymore. Now, we have to prove that O'neana is a place where people can live, grow, and together. And I know that I am one, I want to be a participant in Howard University for the Civil Rights Spring Brook ARC. But again, let me, let me ask this question to the director. Will you put really strict guidelines and strict, and strict, and strict application in? Because I'm afraid of the students here, especially female students. You don't know where these guys are coming from. They could be second graders. They could be anything. And again, you know, I, you know, I just had enough, you know, of being inclusive. I mean, not to a extent like they're segregated. And but I just want, no, it's really bad. So without it would happen. But again, you know, we are cities of people, wherever we are, rich, poor, class, white, wherever. And I think that's what we are. I think that's what we should be.
Good evening. My name is Josie Becker. I'm a Hartwood student, though I'm not here. I'm living with my mother currently at 376 Pennsylvania Avenue in Alhara, New York. According to Pew Research, in 1960, only 29% of young adult Americans between the ages of 18 to 29 lived with a parent. In 2023, that number rose to a staggering 57%. We have not seen numbers this high since the Great Depression of the 1930s. The rising cost of housing and apartments has forced many to remain with their parents at the cost of finding employment they may have the necessary education for. This trend also limits the ability of students to pay off college debt. In some situations, young adults are moving across the country to states where housing is significantly cheaper, continuing the long trend of New York's population decline. The cost of houses and the cost of renting apartments is simply too high. Over the past few decades, the city has tried to remedy this problem by splitting up traditional houses into sections with two or more families per house. While this can be helpful, especially in a college town with thousands of students, it is unfortunately only a band-aid to a larger problem. Creating more housing projects, such as 27 Market Street, is an effective solution that we desperately need. This is also assuming that this will drive down the average cost of rent because not just the wealthy, wealthy should be able to live here. As a member of Reclaim O'neana, we are proud to represent the needs of everyday workers, those without homes and young adult students alike. Creating a more affordable housing market will drive incentive for local migration back to O'neana, encourage Hartwood and SUNY O'neana students to remain in town. Sorry. And after they graduate. And encourage residents to spend more of their income on supporting OTCDO services and businesses. Thank you.
Okay. Michael Stolzer, 142 South Side Drive in the town of O'neana. I own some properties here in the city. I want to say that I really agree with a number of people who've spoken in favor of this project. I have to take issue with one aspect of a couple of the comments that I've heard. There's this division being created by labeling anyone opposed to it as just not being friendly or, or much worse than that. That's the, that's where the divisiveness is, is in the accusations. I think RSS provides a very much-needed service and we should support it. I think there's a difference between the mayor and the common council's fiduciary responsibility to the city and providing the social services that are very much needed. And I think we can have both. And I don't understand at all why this is being turned into a, it's this or it's that when it can be this and that. The location might not be, that might not be the best use of that location. But there are other locations. And if RSS is, remains true to its stated mission, it will provide those services where they can. And their mission isn't, isn't housing. services where they can. And their mission isn't housing. It is supporting people with mental disabilities, drug issues, and such. And I think they, and I would like to see the city support them in that effort. I just think the city needs also to be very clear on what a little change in direction means in the beginning as opposed to down the road. Because a little change in direction here is like that, but way out there, it's modest. So that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Montanti from the Fourth Ward, 72 B Street. And again, what Michael just said, I echo a lot of everyone's sentiments in this room, and they're all valid, from those that are looking for low-income housing to those that know that there's opportunities for RSS to be able to establish that. But one of the answers that we did not hear from the RSS representative, Christine, or the common council did not ask was, who in our local population will have that housing? The impression that you're giving the local young and youth, it makes them appear as if they're the ones that are going to be able to apply for that housing. I believe Christine, at one point in one of the past presentations, you had referenced that there would not be any guarantees on any of our local community members being able to apply for that housing. I might be wrong. Maybe that's changed now because I hear a different conversation about the 9% tax credits that you'll be receiving. So there's maybe a different scenario now. But that alone kind of is setting up our own community to not understand exactly who is this housing for. Wonderful, we need opportunities for low-income housing. Again, many people are saying that it is not the right location. We're just asking the common council, really, is that you have so many loose-ended projects, so many problems that are still ongoing in our community that are not being addressed. And I will bring a point that, yes, I am one of the largest in development in the city, or excuse me, in the town of Oneonta, but my heart is in the humanitarian work that I do. Many of you know that I belong to a lot of the boards. And I love what you said about community and holding, I can't remember your name, I'm sorry, Dorothy, about being a neighbor, about not stepping over that person, about embracing, helping one another out. But that, common council and my dear people in Oneonta, that does not exist. Because you really need to walk the trenches and take people by the hand, one by one, in order to make any progress happen. I experienced a situation on Thursday, and I was, I think, mortified that that individual who knew who I was, and there was another individual who saw me and knew who I was, didn't even come up to ask me, is this individual that's crying on the sidewalk okay? Can we help her in any way? I reached into my resources to find out who could help me. So I'm just asking that if we're going to start projects like this, we really need to fix what's on the ground first. Individuals that are coming forth and stating that we need to love, I love people, we all love people, we all do a lot for people. And I don't think that we walk around saying, oh, this is what I did. But if you're not going to be supportive when we're on a mission to help those that we help, then you need to sit down and let the common council make the best decision versus forcing the issue. It is not the right timing. Market Street is completely a disaster. Conversations that I'm having with developers, they don't want to come to Oneonta until Market Street's finalized. And so, again, I say, we just, we love what RSS does in the community. We appreciate it. We work very well with those that are in the program. But at the end of the day, we're still standing here, holding those on the street who are afflicted with homelessness, with drug addictions. And it's not going to be solved by big government, big businesses. It's not. It's us to solve that problem. And that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Take two or three more. We'd love to see if you can wrap this up. Hello?
Hello.
That's really loud. My name's Ben McGill. I live on Maple Street. Yeah. You've all heard the arguments for selling to RSS for this critical housing development. The research, the data, the need has been stated plainly and in repeated detail many times. Not only do economies only ever grow from the bottom, not only does a stable base of working people and support networks put a safety net under everyone in the community, not only is there cascading financial and cultural benefits that will echo for years to come, but there's also a sense of belonging, a sense of a future, and a sense of home in a place that centers what life is about in the first place: other people. People are what make life worth living, and places that sink or swim together are the only places that can swim. So today, I will let rest, I will let rest the countless studies, the community examples, the endless decades of proof that community integration and affordable housing works for everyone, and instead focus on some of the things I've been hearing from a very loud minority who are overrepresented at these community talks, while most people are working or attending to the labor of their home life. Maybe some of the owners here, who own some of the businesses on the main strip, have heard a certain idea floating around, that the lack of parking due to the removal of the car park will hurt your business. It may be you agree with this sentiment, or have come to agree with it after some very polite and soft-spoken, well-dressed people have told you that this is the case. I just want to inform everyone that the loudest supporters of this argument...
We need to change the tone.
Okay. I think, I can sit. I think that some people, some of the loudest supporters of this argument are making it disingenuously. At least some of them. And there's a reason for that. Last year at the Foot Hills Town Hall about this very subject, there was a veritable train of angry people who used the mic to use words like murderers and kidnappers and another word that starts with R.
Thanks. My name's Chip Holmes. I live on 53 B Street, and we own a building on Main Street, my wife and I, and a business. We employ five people. And so, I mean, that was insulting, but whatever. We all can have our own opinion. We have built 150 low-income units here in the last 10 years. 150. Taxpayer dollars that I'm spending, the people who are worried about this project. And we raise taxes above the cap, and it hurts me in filling my business and sending my kid to school. And the idea that somehow putting 150 units in Oneonta over the last 10 years isn't enough is insulting. So I'll admit that. But if you pay, if you work 40 hours a week at minimum wage in New York State, you make too much to live in RSS. So stop it. Who's going to live here? That's okay. I want everybody to be healthy and happy and have a safe spot. That's not the issue. Am I talking too loud, or am I being...
Just being aggressive.
Oh, okay. Well, the math is simple. It's 1550 times 40 times 52 weeks. That's $32,240 for a single young person just getting out of college. I have a kid in college and I have one in high school. I support many, many things. It's us businesses that are supporting Little League, the soccer, the Oneonta Theater. Everything that happens is coming to us. And we're having a hard time affording and supporting everything, every yearbook, every play, every dance video. So we need help with the taxes. So if this pilot would be more like Newman and less like Housing Visions, or less like Springbrook, a lot less like than Springbrook, and a lot less, what? Springbrook, the Ford on Block? No? That's what we need. Okay. So anyway, we're not bad people. 150 new units, and they have spurred any development here. And I'm not sure why RSS thinks they're the ones that everybody's waiting for to be successful. We need jobs here that pay more than 1550 so people can pay market rate. And doing the math, the gentleman who's in college, he pays $632 a month. I mean, that's the simple math. He can't afford, when he has a job, 635 or more than that, 1,000. I don't think you can go anywhere and get a job and not have to spend that. Again, I'm spending $1,200 down in Bad News for my one kid, and when he gets done, it'll be at least that. So let's be realistic about this, and let's not be insulted to everybody. I'm sorry I raised my voice. So good luck, everybody.
John Hamble, 20 Gardner Place, Apartment 91 here in Oneonta. I've heard a lot of complaints about RSS, a lot of praises about RSS. I've been to several council meetings. I've met different people on the street, and I've heard both sides. What I'm hearing more is more complaining, unless being unified about something. I'd like to know what the city's exact code is. Because not rules or laws, nothing like that, I already know what those are. But as far as what we stand for, going back to my church, I've realized one of my favorite verses that speaks to me is from the chapter of Isaiah, "Come now, let us reason together." I think that should be the new motto for the city of Oneonta, whether it's starting tonight, whether it's starting in the new administration, whatever it is. We need to come together as citizens of the city. I hate seeing the division. I hate seeing, please excuse expression, I hate seeing the pissed-off attitudes from both sides, and it's really upsetting. It really is. And we need to start coming together. We need to stop putting our differences aside. Start acting like what it says in the preamble of our constitution, "We the people," and especially of our country as a whole, "the United States," not the divided states, not the three-quarters minority or whatnot, being united about something. But as I said before, "Come now, let us reason together" should be the new motto of the city of Oneonta. Thank you.
I thank everybody for their involvement here tonight. And again, I'll just remind folks that we will be convening again in a couple of weeks, on April 15. There will be an opportunity for folks who'd like to speak then. We also will be convening again on May 6. Again, an opportunity. And I have, there's a handout that went around that, again, has your council members' contact information. I know Karen can use something they all would like. So we're about to, yes, the venue has yet to be determined on April 15. It may be here. I don't know. In any event, but we'll certainly let it resolve. We're going to take an intermission. Again, I thank you all for your attendance. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes.